City Council Meeting of June 10, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
Awesome. All right, now Agenda Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd love Captain Hyvee to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You betcha. Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, then, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. Number one, we have a proclamation for LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2024. So whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated nationwide in the month of June, and whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the riots that took place the morning of June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in New York, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas it is important to take time during this month to reflect on the LGBTQ rights movement and the important progress that has been made, whereas the City of DeKalb recognizes that one of its great strengths is the diversity of its people, and whereas the City of DeKalb believes the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality and treatment for all people, and ensuring the acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated, and whereas the LGBTQ individuals continue to face discrimination simply for being who they are, continue to be a target of violence and harassment, and yet continue to thrive through efforts, through the efforts of the community itself, and through the support of the LGBTQ-affirming spaces, agencies, businesses, and individual allies, and whereas discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity is often compounded with discrimination on the basis of race, immigration status, religion, disability, and age, among others, and whereas the City of DeKalb strives to lead to reaffirming the lives and values of the LGBTQ individuals through its actions, laws, employees, and commissions, whereas the LGBTQ community invites all members of the DeKalb community to join them during the month of June in celebrating the resiliency of this community. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the City of DeKalb, and encourage all people in our community to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equity, and further encourage people to join me at the DeKalb Pride Fest, which is an amazing fest. Last year, they just absolutely crushed it. Huge event, lots of fun. Highly recommend everyone to come out to the DeKalb Pride Fest on Thursday, June 20, 2024, in downtown DeKalb, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Can I have a round of applause for Pride Month? So, I think we have some members of the community that want to come up. We'd love to get a big photo op with everyone, if you don't mind. Counsel, if you want to come down.
We just followed that direction, right? You know, it's like, please, everyone. Yeah, and, oh, yes. You can't see Scott, you can't see you. All right, are you here? In three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. And you betcha. All right. Love starting meetings that way. All right, then, number two, Presentations. Present, oh, by the way, if anyone is still here for that proclamation, you're more than welcome to leave. We understand everyone has a busy night, so don't feel like you have to stick around. All right, number two, Presentation of the Final Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023. I believe we have a representative from Sickich?
We do.
But how do you want to start? City Manager?
I'll introduce the representative from Sickich, who's a partner in the firm, and his name is Brian Lefever, who will make a brief report on the findings. This is an independent analysis, as you know, and there are many pieces to it. The core piece is the annual comprehensive financial report. Brian?
Good evening.
Evening.
On behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for inviting us to present the report resulting from the audit of the city for year ended December 31, 2023. The audit document that's resulted is the annual comprehensive financial report. There's also a number of additional reports that are issued as well, and I'll kind of reference you and guide you in terms of what those documents mean as well. In terms of this document itself, there's three sections to it, an introductory section of financial and a statistical section. The financial section is what's required for the audit of the city under Illinois compiled statutes. What makes it a comprehensive report is the introductory and statistical section. Within the introductory section, if you're following along at all, the third page in that section is the award that the city received for its 2022 annual comprehensive financial report. Comes from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The city's received this award now for 29 consecutive years. It represents the highest level of financial reporting, often looked at being the most transparent financial report when you go to the level of detail that the city prepares in the report itself. So you should all be commended for that. Within the financial section, what you engage your auditor to do is to audit the financial statements and then give an opinion on those financial statements. In order for us to do that, we follow two sets of standards. The auditing standards come from the AICPA, the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants, and that those set of standards tell us the types of procedures we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. And then the second set of standards are the financial reporting standards, so what do the financial statements need to look like? And those come from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. GASB sets the rules for financial statements for local governments. Once we've followed those two sets of standards, we can then give an opinion on the financial statements. We're pleased to present what's called an unmodified or clean opinion, and what that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. So you should be commended for that as well. The, there's another report then that we issued, which begins on page five, and that's a report associated with a requirement when you have expenditures of greater than $750,000 in federal funds, often referred to as the Federal Single Audit Act. There's two opinions given on the single audit procedures. One is included in this annual comprehensive financial report, or ACTFR, and that's your compliance on laws and regulations that could have a material impact on your financial statements. We had no exceptions there. And then also, we're required to gain an understanding of your internal controls, and if we see what our standards call a material weakness, we then need to report that in this report as well. And we did not identify any material weaknesses in the city's internal control, internal control structure, otherwise known as checks and balances. In that separate single audit report, then, we're also required to test a certain percentage of those expenditures, based on the guidelines from the federal government. As a point of reference, the city expended $7.4 million in federal funds, and the program that was required to be tested as a major program was the ARPA, or COVID funding, of which the city expended $2.4 million. And also, we noted that there were no question costs or findings associated with that single audit, or that major program as well, that major federal program. What else is going on in the documents you receive? There's also a separate report related to your compliance with your TIF districts. So we're required to do a certain testing related to the expenditures in your TIF districts and make sure that they're consistent with the requirements of Illinois compiled statutes for TIFs. No exceptions there as well, unmodified opinion on that report as well. A couple of the other highlights in the ACTFR itself, if you haven't, if you don't have a chance to read the entire document, I would encourage you to read the management's discussion and analysis. It's just after those two sets of audit opinions, it's intended to be the executive summary of a 200-page document. It does have certain required items that get presented there, but then there's a certain latitude that the city has, because the city prepares their own executive summary to give some of the whys of the financial statements, comparing 2022 with 2023. If any of your constituents are looking for financial information about the city, obviously they go to the budget document that's on your website, and then they can go to this document, because this tells what actually happened during 2023 from a financial standpoint. Within the, just the highlights, and I know Bill did a good job in his memo to the council about the financial results of the year, but if you're looking for the results of the general fund, you can find those on page 14. You did have an increase, meaning a revenues over expenditures of $6.6 million. What's, what does that mean? It means that you're structurally in balance. You can afford to provide the services that you're providing with the revenue streams coming in. But I would also encourage you to look back at your fund balance policy and see if it's still speaking to the council at the levels that you want it to be at. And then, based on that, you can make some decisions about, you know, what to do with those fund balance reserves. Obviously, a big piece of how any municipality is operating now is how are their pensions doing? So you've got your IMRF, your police pension, and your fire pension. So you look at one side of the equation, which is, are we putting in the amount of money that the actuary recommends that we put in? And you'll see tenure schedules that say yes, you're putting in exactly what's required by the actuarial determinations. It's done a little bit different from IMRF, you fund on a percent of covered payroll for IMRF. For police and fire, you fund based on a dollar amount. But if you add additional individuals to the plan, that dollar amount doesn't necessarily keep up, so that dollar amount's going to continue to increase. So then you look at the other side of the equation, you're like, but our pension, like our funded percentage, you know, the markets were great and we're just not getting there. You're in the same boat as your counterparts in other municipalities. Does that make you feel better? No, but you do have good reserves set aside in those funds, but to get to 100% funding is a big stride, and gradually that, you know, you're working towards that. Under the current law of 2040, albeit there's, you know, pending, you know, bills out there that might extend that out. So just, you know, from a numerical standpoint, 93% funded for IMRF, fifth, just over, and this is based on the market value of assets, 51% at 123123 for police, and then 40% for fire at 123123. The, and then the returns, you know, 2022 was not a good year in the market, 2023 was a banner year in the market, so it was a significant bounce back from investment return standpoint for all three of the plans, with, you know, 15% plus returns, you know, for all three of the, all three of the plans. Those are what I would consider to be the highlights. In conclusion, the audit went smoothly and on a timely basis, and we always note that we're on time when, you know, the calendar doesn't change in terms of what meeting is on my calendar to come out and present to you all, and that's, this is right where we were at from when we planned this, you know, nine months ago. It does take a significant period of time to plan the audit and then execute the audit, and it was a very good working relationship with city staff, very professional and easy to work with. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderwoman Zasada?
I think my question is probably more for Bill, so I apologize, but with the overall unanticipated revenues going up like $6 million, does, so to what percentage is our general fund funded at this point?
What is the size of our reserve? The reserve rule is 25%. We're at 75.
Okay. That's what I thought I saw. I was just trying to like verify what I was understanding. And one of the things that you had said was specifically that it, I mean, I don't think that we need to look at changing our policy. Our policy seems good at 25%, like that our requirement is to fund it to 25%, but it, I'm sure you have plans for those funds and maybe...
Well, the council will probably get very tired of the conversation that's going to begin in July and go through August, September, October, November. But, yeah, obviously, you've highlighted something that will be of much interest to the general public and to this council and our staff, of course. It's a good problem to have, but the structural problem we have, which is enormous, we owe $105 million for our pensions. That's due 100%, well, it's due 90% in 2040. So until or unless we see some crack at the state level, that's what we earned last year is a drop in a bucket, I hate to say it. So we have to be prudent. On the other hand, there are needs that have been identified in our wards and council sessions over a lot of years that we're trying to address in a thorough fashion, and some of them are very large, too. So, believe me, I think about this night and day, and I will, I will give you options. You'll have those options. I may have an opinion on some of them and others not.
What we do know is, no matter what, we will not be able to fill that gap as the lonely city of DeKalb. And that's the part in our strategic plan, we talked about advocacy. So being a part of the Metro West Council of Government, being a part of the Illinois Municipal League, making sure that, one, that we are active advocating at the state level, but we're also represented by organizations that are also holding our state legislature to the fire on, this is not, this is not sustainable. There has to be a change that happens, and the idea before, one, right now, is to move it to 2050. But also, that's doing is just kicking the can down the road. There needs to be a complete reformation of, whether it's the actuarial tables or however we're doing the actual calculation on what real solid funding to make sure all of our police and fire, when they retire, are completely 100% safe and knowing that they're going to have their pension. That needs to be redone at the state. But right now, what they're presenting to us is they'll drive us into complete bankruptcy, ruin the City of DeKalb, as well as many of the other 1,294 municipalities in the state of Illinois. It's egregious. We all need to have a vote or a voice in that with our state legislature to make sure that they understand clearly this cannot continue. But the organizations we're a part of have done a pretty good job advocating for it. At least the knowledge is there. Now, people need to, people need to step up at the leadership level, at the state level, and make a change there. That summarize it? City Manager?
It does. And my only concern, as we go through the next few years, when you have 10 years, you wait oftentimes to the seventh or eighth year, right? And then, oh boy, we better do something. Time's running out. And what we need to do is be able to get the job done here locally while time marches on, whether there is, whether the toes at the state level have asbestos wrapping them or not, because they've been held to the fire, but there's scarcely a smell of anything coming yet, so...
So Bill has gone down to Springfield to speak directly on this particular issue, but I know coming before council in the near future is going to be, what can we do as a city to maybe take a little more leadership on it? Because one thing that I'm curious about is, change is going to happen. They can't bankrupt municipalities all across the state. But the issue is, when do we think that change may happen, and where is the city going to be in that timeline financially? So that's something that Bill has worked hard on. We have some relationships with some guys that are wicked smart, that can help with some of these calculations, and maybe we can show a little leadership alongside the organizations we're a part of to advocate for, change has to happen, because this is the thing that will undo everything that we've been doing over the last five years.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Well, appreciate all the work you all do every year. I mean, I won't speak on behalf of council, but I think the majority have a high trust level in our city staff in order to make sure that they execute our finances very well, but it's always great to have a respected firm like yours to be able to come in, that independent auditor, look through it, and give us the thumbs up. So thank you very much for that. City Manager, you and the finance team, you all do an amazing job. It's great to hear it from the auditor itself, but I think each council member here would also agree that the work that you all do is what leads to an audit that we have before us. So thank you for all the hard work you all do as well.
Second that. I'm the conductor in the orchestras in the finance department and in our other city departments. It's a collaborative effort every year, and we thank Sickich very much for their guidance. They're always ready to answer questions we may have. We don't wait till the audit process begins and engaging in conversation about things to anticipate so that we don't have problems during the audit process.
Excellent.
Well, thank you very much. Enjoy working with the city.
All right. Have a wonderful night. Thank you again.
You, too. Thank you, Brian.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have Mark Charvat. As a reminder, you have three minutes for your public comments.
I found that figure kind of amazing, 75% funded, and our requirement is 25%, and we're talking about pensions going forward. The fact that the city is doing so much hiring is only contributing to the increase of our pension obligation, so that's something we need to really need to work at. You guys are kind of digging your own hole here regarding that. I want to talk about something that happened a few weeks ago. The city council held a special Saturday workshop that received very little coverage on local media. Sadly, the city chose not to provide a video or audio recording of the meeting. However, word got out about some scary initial discussions that were made. The primary focus of the meeting was to come up with ways to raise taxes on citizens who reside in DeKalb, who do business in DeKalb, who shop in DeKalb. Three taxes were discussed and proposed and initially agreed upon include a 1/4% increase in the general sales tax, 4% increase in the gasoline tax, and the reinstatement of the regressive 1% grocery sales tax. Most business owners that I've spoke with are adamantly against the 1/4 of a 1% sales tax increase, as it would put the City of DeKalb at the highest tax rate, sales tax rate, in the entire county. Not only does it affect those who shop within the City of DeKalb, the greatest harm would be to our local businesses who will be put at a competitive disadvantage. Regarding the gasoline tax, everybody knows you don't buy gasoline in DeKalb if you don't have to. Everybody knows you go to Rochelle, where it's taxed lower, and the fuel price is generally 40 to 50 cents a gallon less. So DeKalb stands to lose even more money pushing shoppers outside our community to purchase gasoline. This also has a detrimental effect on sales inside convenience stores that are attached to gas stations and will further reduce sales tax revenue. People will not be going inside anymore. Of course, you already probably heard that the state is eliminating the 1% grocery sales tax in January of 2026. However, our mayor and city manager are proposing reinstating this regressive tax that hurts the most vulnerable members of our community. Perhaps you've noticed that prices of your groceries have gone up. The city has made a windfall off the increase in grocery taxes as of late. The hypocrisy, the hypocrisy spoken on this council regarding lowering the tax burden on our community is total nonsense. So let's get this. The City of DeKalb has kept everybody's property tax at approximately the same level while increase in the library tax, so now you're going to throw three new taxes on your neighbors, individuals you represent? It's very problematic. Another concern is the Kraft Heinz facility. Perhaps you've noticed construction has stopped. A lot of our tax revenue is supposed to come from the building. If it's not occupied, who's going to have to pay for it? The taxpayers. Thank you.
Then we have Lynn Fazekas.
Good evening. I want to comment on the proposal to raise our water rates and fees. Yea or nay on that? I'm, no, not yet, and that's because a lot of our water fund goes to places that are not easily seen. So to illustrate that, I found out about this practice when I went to a hearing of, a budget hearing, a couple of years ago. I asked why the finance department's organizational chart showed five full-time employees, yet the wages shown in the finance general fund budget covered only three full-time employees. So why was that? Well, it was explained to me at the time that some city wages are covered by different funds, including the water fund, but this is not transparent. Since then, I've collected allocation reports from at least six different budget years, starting in 2017, which is when it went underground. For 2023, I've identified nearly 50 employees across seven city departments who do not work for the water utility, yet they get paid in part with water revenues in this non-transparent way, and of course, their budgets in the general fund are understated. Anyway, during the '23 budget year, 10% of the wages paid to employees in the city manager's office were charged to the water fund, 25% of salaries in IT likewise came from water, and water made up 40% of street department compensation, according to these allocation reports that I got using FOIA. But here's something that will give you an idea of the extent of the situation in simplified terms. It examines just one budget line, and that is regular wages. So in 2023, about $1.5 million was budgeted for regular wages in the Water Operations Fund. The Water Department has 10 employees. Their regular wages came to $700,000. So do you know where the other $800,000 go? Where to go? And why? And what for? And is it justified? So if you don't know the answers to these questions, I urge you to postpone a decision on raising the water rates and fees until you've explored this dependency on the water fund and this extreme dependency, and figure out what should be done with it. Thank you very much.
Moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. And then Agenda Item G, the Consent Agenda. Number one, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of May 28, 2024. Number two, Accounts Payable and Payroll through June 10, 2024, in the amount of $1,988,286.17. Number three, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through April 2024. Number four, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through April 2024. And number five, Crime-Free Housing Bureau Report, May 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations. We have none. Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2024-058, Receiving and Filing the FY 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Single Audit Report, Report on Compliance with Public Act 85-1142, TIF Report, Downstate Operating Assistance Certification and Independent Auditors Report, Illinois Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, and Consolidated Year-end Financial Report, CYEFR, and Management Letter. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager, any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, any comments or questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations. We have none. Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2024-058, Receiving and Filing the FY 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Single Audit Report, Report on Compliance with Public Act 85-1142, TIF Report, Downstate Operating Assistance Certification and Independent Auditors Report, Illinois Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, and Consolidated Year-end Financial Report, CYEFR, and Management Letter. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager, any further comments or questions?
No.
All right, any comments or questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-058 passes. Number two, Resolution 2024-059, Authorizing the Dedication of the FY 2024 Allocation in the Amount of $50,000 to Barb City Manor for the Resurfacing of Parking Lots. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-058 passes. Number two, resolution 2024-059, authorizing the dedication of the FY 2024 allocation in the amount of $50,000 to Barb City Manor for the resurfacing of parking lots. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. If you want or to all the persons remember back in 2019, the council approved a resolution. It's really a ten-year agreement with the Barb City Manor Board for an operating budget that would be about $50,000 a year from the city in terms of capital improvements for Barb City Manor's uses. And that would extend through 2028. So, in my background, I've identified what the previous uses are. Here we are into our fifth year, and executive director Sarah Davis, who's here in the audience tonight, sitting on the side, has requested on behalf of the board, the 2024 allocation, which is to repair and resurface the facility's parking lots, up to $50,000. It's perfectly in order in terms of the previous agreement. We recommend its approval.
And Sarah, do you feel settled in? Like, you filled the shoes at this point? Yeah? Good, good. Counsel, any questions or comments on this? Well-needed funding to a well-deserving organization. So, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-059 passes. Awesome. Can't wait to see the new parking lot. And you do not have to stay the rest of the meeting. You're more than welcome to leave. We know how busy you are.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right. Moving on to number three, resolution 2024-060, adopting a 2024 environmental sustainability plan. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson. City manager, there's a lot going on here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And happy to present on this. Julie Jesmer is here, by the way, who is the current chair of the commission.
And the head of trash squirrels.
Yeah, absolutely. So, a little bit of history, which I provided in your background. There's a lot more to tell. The commission has existed since 1991. It's expanded its reach in terms of topics and interests within the commission, as it should, because the world has changed in several months since that time. And some of the climate challenges that are facing us are of such a state that the commission has, for some years, been wondering how, at the local level, we can address some of these. What do we have the means to do? What could we do in collaboration with others? And so, a lot of what's before you tonight in the proposed 2024 environmental sustainability plan is to define with some specifics, not every problem to be addressed, but some of those that might be within our reach over time to address. I've just danced over a longer history, and I welcome you to look back at that as you please. We, at the staff level, were given a draft plan back in January. Had some time to work on it, presented to the commission in February and March. And commission members had, were welcome to continue to, and we revised the plan a number of times. We were happy that some of the commissioners continued a bit of a dialogue. How about this? How about that? So, in May, basically cut that off and said, all right, we've got to present something, bring it to the council. That's what's before you tonight. In the background is a larger piece, but also you were given the original, the current sustainability plan, which was done in 2014, an early draft by the commission itself. And then, this is, I think you would say, a collaborative document. Gone through a lot of detail in the background, more than normal, just to highlight some of the suggestions that have been made. One of the key suggestions, and it generated some early conversation, and I have to say, the city manager needed to do some education, and Julie and others were more than happy to educate me on what's been evolving in our region, northern Illinois region. There are several hundred communities that have strategically adopted a framework, a tool, I guess, by which you, each community, at its own pace and with its own resources, can reach for certain general objectives that might be to the advantage of everyone in the region. And there is an item that follows here, which is our staff recommendation to join in that. You've looked at some of the background. I would be happy to address any specific questions you have. The attached plan that you've had some time to look at, I would say, is a plan that provides some action steps within our grasp to implement. And the focus is work that we can engage in as everyday citizens. Certainly, there are trained practitioners in, who work and live in our community, who can add their expertise to help us in this. But ultimately, and finally, on a local stage, it comes down to what everyday people are willing to embrace and feel they can accomplish.
Awesome. Counsel, questions or comments?
Oh, and I want to thank Barb Larson for being the council's liaison to the commission. And Barb and I have had conversations. I was first invited to appear back in February to listen and hear. And Barb and I continued conversations after that. So, her liaison role was very valuable to me in putting this together at the end.
Agreed. Barb's been a great representative on that. So, thank you for the time that you dedicate outside of just council meetings, participating. Alderman Perkins?
I do have one question. So, looking over, there's a lot of detail in here. How do you align and ensure that some of these things, we're building these things into day-to-day activities?
So...
Because there really is a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And this is general. It's like, you look at our comprehensive land use plan, there's a lot of stuff in there. Pages and pages of action steps and goals and objectives. Where it all comes together is on a council agenda, when there's something specific that involves council-approved resources, whether it's staff or financial or a combination of both. And there are certainly, this is, the environmental challenges facing us are not just public challenges. There are private roles to be played. And in the long run, private entities are as important, if not more important, than public entities. A case in point, I heard a lot about this in the last couple of weeks, having nothing to do with our own document. But if you look out and you listen to shows covering this conference or that conference, there was an analysis of who's winning the race toward the production of EV vehicles. And right now, it's the republic of, People's Republic of China. They're swamping the rest of the national economies and producing EV vehicles. But an interesting footnote to all that is there, the factories that are producing EV vehicles are producing their energy to run the machines to produce the vehicles off coal. So, interesting point. And it just, it exemplifies a point that nothing's perfect right now in this conversation. And no national entity is perfect, and we are certainly not. But we're learning from experiences of others. And if we just keep our eyes open, what you're seeing, Alderman, is that where do you begin when this sea of activity? I think that's what, either you say, what are we doing here? And we do some analysis and bring it back to you. Or, on occasion, we bring something to you, which I'm doing in the next item, the Greenest Region Compact, which provides just a framework. We fill it in. Some other larger, older cities are doing more than we are, but they have more resources than we. So, I think it's going to be a rolling process.
I think... But I guess more specifically where I'm going is, just as, for an example, if you look on page eight, under the recycling section, there's called out some pretty specific actions.
Yes, yeah.
Encourage smaller leak-proof hauling equipment rather than open shell compacters. Encourage haulers to provide for the collection of household hazardous waste with every weekly pickup. Reduce fleet emissions by engaging transition to a fleet of fifty percent, you know, and so on. And the last one, encourage LRS dumping in local WMX landfill in Cortland to reduce road impacts and fleet emissions. I guess, more specifically there, you can look at that. And are we going to, we plan to tie some of those to the RFQ when we go back out?
We do.
And say, you know what, this is, and that's just a for example.
These four checkmarks were all part of the conversation. As we were talking to the respondents to our RFP the last time, we had two, as you know. And both were in conversation with Brian Faber and I over what could be done in these areas. The hauler that didn't gain the contract was further along in providing compactors, for instance, that were totally enclosed. There wasn't a possibility of trash blowing out over top. The biggest problem would be just when they're dumping in the dump itself. Some of that just cannot be accounted for, but not certainly driving down our highways and byways. But it was a caution to LRS. And I've talked to our liaison to LRS a couple of times about this. And they are moving. They're just a little bit back of where their competitor was on that. But obviously, they're taking it seriously. So, we keep this in conversation, and then we can report to you and say, hey, guess what? You know, in advance of the next contract, this is where we are, actually. And that's just one example. And there are other specifics here. And you wonder where they came from, or we just pulled them out? No, these are part of ongoing conversations with people that we do business with.
And just sticking with that one, just as a for example, you know, when we go out for the RFQ, if there are specific items that we've identified as a community that we want to pursue, you know, then when we get these bids back, you know, I think do everything we can to put it into the bid. But then, call out some areas that may or may not align with what our plan is.
Yes.
You know, as an evaluation point, when we're here talking about it. Because I know, among things that everyone's passionate about, you know, everyone's passionate about their garbage.
Yes.
And when we're sitting here and we're talking about it, the thing that everyone's looking at, the most important thing is, how much is it going to cost? You know, so I think, I love endorsing this, but I think it's important that we keep this out front of people in the community to say, hey, it may not always be free.
I think, yeah, sorry. And I'll get right to you, Alderman Larson. I think an important backstory in this is, you know, a couple, two, three years ago, what we were looking at were initiatives that Seattle was the example. But we don't have Amazon, Microsoft, or what Austin's doing. But we don't have Tesla, Detroit, and GM, and New York with that little financial district they have, Wall Street. There was a lot of examples that were just, like, trying to solve a world issue, and DeKalb was going to be a part of solving that directly, where it wasn't within the means of what we could do financially. This, with Alderman Larson's presence on the commission, and Julie, her perspective, especially the perspective of trash squirrels, like, what can we do? We can pick up garbage locally. So, it doesn't get into our storm sewers, doesn't get into our river, doesn't get into our oceans. But those are things we can do locally. I know Bill spent a lot of time on this as well, really trying to find things that are within our reason. How can we contribute to the global issue, but do it in still a fiscally responsible way here at the city? And if you read many of these, they aren't a stretch. It's like, you know what? This is a nice guideline for when we're in negotiations, like you said.
Right.
We can incorporate it in, and then we can weigh the cost. And if it looks like, oh, it's too expensive, we can forego it. But at least what I loved about this when I first read it, it was just reasonable. Like, we can do this, you know, over the period of a few years, kind of thing, or maybe longer. But ultimately, they're within reach. And that's where, I think, Bill, you said it where, you did, you said, "within reach." And that was the guideline that they used for this.
And nothing speaks louder for the sensitivity a community has for their environment than how we kind of keep it clean. And Julie's initiative is so important in that way. And it's a never-ending, on the way here, I was behind a vehicle that stopped in front of me and made a turn. And just as they're making the turn, they threw out, just threw out the driver's window. I think it's candy that goes in some, it was a long pink rod, about that long. And it must have been empty at that point, just threw it out, made the turn. I had that instinct to pull alongside and, you know, roll down the window. Do you want me to go back and get that for you? Did you drop that? But I didn't. I just came to work. So, but, so there's, a lot of it is just training at the very basic level. Families, the community that we serve know about that. And while we can do other things, we can't lose track of that, I think, is what I'm saying.
Alderman Larson?
I think some of it's been said about very passionate people, as we all are to some degree, about our city and world as a whole, about keeping it healthy and keeping it clean and everything. But yes, we had to get it down to something reachable. But it also, just to let you know, I think it was 2014 was our last plan. And that's been, by the CEC revisited, and like, how are we doing, and different things. And I was on council then, but I've heard from stories that it was like, well, talk to your alderman about getting maybe some charging stations, which we now have, and we need more, but it started. So, it's going to be, it's not going to go on a shelf. The CEC will constantly be, how are we doing? So, they're keeping their own scorecard here. But it's also, it was so interesting, the CEC came up with, you know, a great thing, which be the train in DeKalb. And that was right, like, the month before that this whole thing with a possible train station coming back to DeKalb. So, it's one of those things, as with the transportation center. If a genie would today come and say, we will give you an all-electric fleet of buses, we couldn't take them because we have no place to charge them. So, the first step in getting to an all-electric fleet is this transportation system. So, it might be that it's like, oh, you know, that we don't need. But that is really the step, if we want to get to electric vehicles, you have to charge them somewhere. And a bus just doesn't charge in a home charger for an hour. So, I think there's a lot of things that are first steps, but they're first steps to bigger steps down the road.
Alderman Verbic?
Exceptional plan to everyone involved. Thank you. I think to Alderman Perkins' point, we can start carving these out. And I would really like us to lean in and build a funding model for each of these components. So, Alderman Perkins, to your point on the extra services for trash removal, we can get those numbers in advance and start building those around each of these items to know, well, what will we expect? What will be those costs? And then we can start prioritizing as we look at each of these action steps, you know, somewhat getting an idea of what will be the funding needed to make it happen. And then we can decide, and the community can decide, what does present best value.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Walker?
Hey, yeah, I just, like, where do we even start? Like, it's so much. This is, this is a lot. So, I mean, where do we even start? Like, who's to say what should come first? I mean, it just, I mean, it's a lot. And I understand 100% what Perkins, Alderman Perkins is saying.
So, some things you just did, as a matter of fact, last week, or last meeting, the council adopted 2021 Illinois Energy Conservation Code. That was one of the five codes that you adopted. And that's big. It impacts new building and renovations and commercial buildings. And there are certain limits. Not unlike when the accessibility code first came out, people were wondering, well, when do I have to, like, widen my front door or put in ramps and so forth. So, there are criteria in that code, when you have to do if you're remodeling. But new has to fully comply with that. And that is a state mandated code. And it just happens to coincide with the International Building Code series that we have, the energy code. So, we're doing that. And you took action to do that. That's a big change. We had the 2015 code before and didn't have anything about that. So, houses are going to be warmer, they're going to be tighter, da-da-da. So, that makes some difference in preventing the loss of carbon into the atmosphere, so.
Well, and, I mean, the street light replacement that we're doing, solar farms.
LED lights, solar farms, yeah. So, that, and maybe we can highlight, just so, because some of this may just sneak by. I mean, it comes up, and here it is, and, okay. But we'll highlight that more readily going forward.
Yeah, it'd be good to have the action step to Alderman Walker's point. And then, what are we actively doing on some of these? And what is, you know, to be determined in a future date? So, we could see, you know what, we're actually going after quite a bit of this. So we could see, you know what, we're actually going after quite a bit of this just in our day-to-day. Because I think this council has always had this desire to figure out how we can be more and more environmental friendly. So I think that comes out in a lot of our, you know, day-to-day execution and the things that we pass. Yes, Alderman Perkins?
One last thing, and I'll stop beating the garbage drum. But just sticking with the for example as well, if memory serves, when we had the RFQs for the last time around, with Waste Management and our current guy, Lakeview or wherever it is.
Lake Shore.
Lake Shore. And Waste Management was, it was a clear objective for them to do this. I don't think Lake Shore was anywhere on the radar with it. Would it be worth reaching out to them and say, hey, this is something that's going to be in the RFQ coming up? And if it's not in there, we need to know what your plan is. Because again, with the garbage stuff, the money is what, that's how we really justify it, is the money is what mattered, you know? So at least if we do that, then we'll have two, maybe more vendors who are compliant with what we're really striving to achieve. If that makes sense.
Does. It was on their radar. You know, they're a company that has grown from the combination of several, and it's grown, I'd say in the last five to 10 years, waste has been growing, not unlike that model, but worldwide for decades. So they're in probably a stronger position to make quicker steps towards some of this. But we did talk about this, because they're very much aware that that was going to be one of the selling points of the competition. So what have they done since then? I don't have sort of, I don't have a scorecard on it, but I think your point is well taken that we need, but we can anticipate, we're a few years out yet, but we can anticipate that. And we can make that part of what we're requiring in the RP. Just as we made, this is a lesser challenge for any of the haulers, but we wanted to have household hazardous goods picked up at the curbside. So we got that, both of them had to perform that, we wrote that into the specs. So this is another thing, we can write into the specs.
Right.
And if you can't do it, you can't bid it.
All right. Oh, Alderman Smith?
Maybe more for you. I think there's a bill pending that's sitting on the governor's desk that applies to trash carriers to have a tighter covering over their transport equipment. If I'm read that correctly, maybe Julie, you might know, it covers the garbage trucks as well. So it might be a self, there might be a prophecy taking place here very shortly that will resolve the issues I think Alderman Perkins is bringing up with some of our carriers about covering their trucks. And my understanding is that bill will be signed, and so.
Have to look at it.
Yeah, and it does require, I think it covers both garbage trucks and the ones up and down the tollway, so.
Those MBIs, semis, you know, yeah. Anything else? All right, hearing none, roll call please. Oh, wait, Julie? You got to come up to the mic so people at home can hear you, if that's right.
One thing I wanted to mention is being part of the Greenest Commission is that we'll have access to resources, especially for people that can help write grants to get funding.
Awesome.
So partnering with people who know how to do that is going to be, is going to bring the funding in to fulfill some of these wishes, just wanted to say.
Awesome. Thanks, Julie. All right, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sissata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-060 passes. Moving on to number four, resolution 2024-061 endorsing the greatest, Greenest Region Compact of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, I put like a little teaser in your background on this, and it was just on one of these 10 goals. It was all the things you could fill in, all the spaces if you were all in, and you had endless resources and so forth. But it gives you an idea, other people other than us are thinking about some to-do lists. And so this aligns us with the 275 cities and towns and villages that have already decided this is a tool, and we can compare and contrast what we've accomplished here, you know, a couple of times a year going to conferences with people, free conferences, Northern Illinois, where we can go and see what's been done. And so in other words, it could cost us nothing, or it could cost us something, but it will cost us what you want as the council, and it would require us to bring to you, hey, we'd like to do this as part of our budget, 400 budget, or whatever budget it is for the year.
Council, questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sissata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2024-061 passes.
May I say just one thing? And I'm sorry, I apologize to Scott Zach for omitting his role in this process. He has been our staff liaison to the commission for a number of years now, and has been very helpful in helping this move along.
I apologize for that too, Scott. You're just everywhere, involved in everything. There is, no doubt about that, 100%. All right, so I'm going to move on to agenda item five, but I want to explain how this is going to work. So we're going to pass these in omnibus fashion, so the next six things. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a motion, I'm going to read all six, because they're all combined together. That way the city manager can get through them, explain them all, we can have one conversation about it, and then we'll ultimately pass those. Because it's in the TIF district, as usual, I can't participate, but I can still stay and run the meeting. So I asked Ruth to recuse me from the vote, so I won't participate in the vote, and I won't participate in the discussion outside of just calling on people to be able to talk. So I wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that. So first, what we are going to, what I'm asking for a motion to approve these six in omnibus fashion. The first one is resolution 2024-062 authorizing an agreement with Elliott and Wood Incorporated for the installation of an eight-inch sanitary sewer in the amount not to exceed $96,720, TIF Fund 262. And number two, which is resolution 2024-063 authorizing an agreement with Wagner Excavating LLC for the installation of an eight-inch sanitary sewer in the amount not to exceed $52,650, TIF Fund 262. Number three, resolution 2024-064 authorizing a tax increment financing incentive for 128 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $11,367.50, 128 East Lincoln Highway LLC. Number four, resolution 2024-065 authorizing a tax increment financing incentive for 214 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $18,800 by E rentals. And number six, resolution two, nope, number five, resolution 2024-066 authorizing a tax increment financing incentive for 250 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $2,250, Ducky's Formular. And then the last one, resolution 2024-067 authorizing a tax increment financing TIF incentive for 302 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $21,187.50, 302 East Lincoln Highway Partnership Trust, number 1281. And for the record, none of these are my property. Can I have a motion to bring all six of these to the floor in omnibus fashion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Well, you have to vote to bring it.
Sorry, roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Sissata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
I'm accusing myself from this completely, I guess.
Seven I?
Perfect. And then we'll need a motion at the end to write, City Manager, yep, okay. All right, City Manager?
Thank you. There's a lot of background here, it's five pages, single space, to try to bring this together, and it may still be a little elusive. So I'll just very generally speak to this and then answer any questions you may have, and there may be a number of them. So the context is some sewer smells in the downtown off and on over recent years, and more particularly in the last year. And the source was elusive, a certain amount of word of mouth was generating a number of possibilities. Ultimately, thanks to Andy Rye and KWRD, we were, the Kewauckee Water Reclamation District, we decided, let's do this scientifically and professionally and try to figure this out. And we did an investigation of the facing businesses to Lincoln Highway between First and Fourth, and did dying of the sewers, and were able to identify that there were four buildings with sewers that had at some point been connected to our storm system. And the reasons for that were, may not have been malicious, and it wasn't, and the connections were not made by any of the current owners. So we could determine that in terms of time. But it could be that the sanitary sewers were not at hand, if you will, and that the cost of connecting was prohibited. And sometime, we don't know individually, the records don't show going back decades, but it wasn't just what was less expensive and easiest in practice, but it could have been that they thought they were connecting to the right pipe, too. But anyway, so we had four offending buildings. We looked at a variety of solutions, and in the end, we came down to the fact that there had to be some main extensions to get in the direction of these buildings. And then there had to be some private investment to turn their sewers in another direction and go through the back alley that is running parallel with Lincoln Highway, almost from First Street over to Fourth Street. The Kewauckee Water Reclamation District, not knowing about this at the time, back in 2019, did run a reliever sewer from Second Street, middle of Second Street, roughly where our diagonal spaces are for the City Hall, down the alley that goes behind the old Eduardo's and Topa and heads east. Doesn't go the full length of that block down the alley. And so some of the, and that was to provide access to a sewer for the construction that was going on in the old Eduardo's building. And Topa was having some sewer problems, and so they connected, and they did that at their own expense at the time. So the four buildings are identified, 128, 214, 250, 302, East Lincoln Highway. We've talked to the owners of those buildings. If we just left it to them, the harsh approach would have been, well, we found you have an illegal connection. You have 30 days to cease and desist, and if not, we will close you down. That's over here on the pendulum. And if we had done that, all of them made it very clear that, well, we're just going to close our businesses. We can't afford to do this on our own. Even if we could get a new building sewer, which is that part which is within their four walls, out to a public space, whether it's an alley or a street, how would we get the main to that point? And we're not, we didn't know when we bought these buildings that we had to put in a new central sewer. So we have, we've talked about our partnership with KWRD, it came to the fore here. Now, some people will say, and I've heard some people saying that, and I get it, why isn't this just a sanitary district problem? Well, people could also say to the sanitary district, why isn't the work that you're doing to put in new sewers on the South Fifth, South Sixth, and so forth, where our trash pumps are, where water gets into their sanitary system from some pumps that were illegally connected to their system? Why isn't the city doing that? You know, it's, this is their storm water coming in. So pox on both houses, we're wrestling with problems, none of us created, that we're trying to, in an evolutionary way, solve. No one anticipated this was going to come up. When we did our budget last year, we didn't see this was coming, and we didn't really fully know where we were going to be till that March, April, although we had done most of the dying in January, February. But a lot of conversation with the owners, with the sanitary district, has got us to this point. So what are we going to do? There are two public sewer, reliever sewers that are involved here. One goes from the manhole that kicked off the reliever sewer, follow me, please. The reliever sewer that went behind Eduardo's, going east. Now it's going to go west behind Lord Stanley's and the Dance Studio to pick up their sewers. And in between those two buildings, or at the end of that, is a building that is one of the offending buildings, 128. And they can hook up directly. That's an open sewer, meaning we open-cut it, there's a back hole, and it cut through the asphalt, and the back hole goes down. Why? Because we want to put in some futures in case Lord Stanley's, which doesn't have an illegal sewer, but has a very old sewer, or the Dance Studio, which doesn't have an illegal sewer, but has an old sewer, want to hook up at some point. We put tees in at those points. You can't do that if you're pushing with a machine through, like an arrow, through the underground space. Okay? That's one. The other reliever sewer goes, it starts where the one that was put in in 2019 ended, and it goes almost to Third Street, but doesn't cross Third Street, because there's only one building on the east side of Third Street, and that's the one right on the corner where Will Red's Flower Shop is. They don't own that building, but the owner of that building has that dilemma. And they can push a slightly larger-than-normal house sewer under Third Street, so we don't have to break up Third Street and deal with sagging and so forth this summer and approaching Corn Fest. And that can go to the slightly extended reliever sewer there. And that can be, the reliever sewer is going to be put in, and then the connection to the building is going to go through a force system. Are you with me? Okay. So now, we've got the two ends. The ones in the middle are going to have to turn around their sewers and go out to the back, and we'll work with the contractors that are working in those alleys. And we've asked, in our AIP fashion, we basically asked for the house sewer part, the building sewer part, to be basically a 50/50 prospect. And actually, we've done some sewer AIP relief grants. But the mains are, were going to be split between the sanitary district and the city, which is not typically considered to be the private property obligation. And it came to a number, you know, it's not quite a quarter of a million all-in. Some of that is from the sanitary district, some of that's from the private property owners. The full breakdown is in your background, pages 13 and 14. The ultimate total for the city to do the reliever mains and the combined share with our part of the private lateral extensions is $158,755. And we recommend this package solution to you and for your consideration tonight.
Council, questions or comments? Alderman Sissata?
Wow. Thank you for figuring this out, thank you.
I want to thank Andy Rye for helping a lot.
Thank you, Andy. I really appreciate this three-way solution, splitting the costs, and this is really important infrastructure stuff, so I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Bill, we don't have any connections under Lincoln Highway, do we, 38?
There is a very deep sanitary sewer.
It's still there, okay.
Some people who, at least it may not have been on the council, but remember, there's a lot of conversation in town about, it's about 2018, 1718. There were a couple of people having problems, and they weren't illegal, but they needed to fix their sewer. There's a public storm sewer running on the south side, under the curb lane of Lincoln Highway on the south side. It's very, and it's above where the sanitary is. And the problem was trying to get by gravity underneath the storm main to get to the public sanitary main, which would have been legal. And somewhere along the way, a couple of those buildings just stopped short, and they knocked into the public storm.
Made a mistake. Yeah, but we don't want to tear up Lincoln Highway, that cost would be.
We don't. It's not only that, boy, there's a lot of infrastructure right in the two curb lanes.
Right.
But it's also not all-new infrastructure. And every time you expose and do that, then there's sagging. And in fact, right after that repair was done at considerable expense by one of the downtown business owners, there were water main breaks and other issues that started occurring almost immediately after the deep excavation, so. And you can't leave that open. So, and you can't leave that open for weeks at a time. It's a major state highway. We had to permit to get it done as fast as possible. And we wanted to go down the back alleys, which was easier and a lot more.
I guess where I'm going with it, this option is extremely, is probably a third of what it would be if we went down Lincoln Highway.
Yes, correct.
So there's additional savings. That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions, counsel? Yes, Alderman Perkins?
I would just say, good job tracking us down. I know this has been on the agenda, been commented on, you guys have been chasing it for literally months to get to this. It's a lot to summarize in one meeting, but there's been a lot that's been going on in the background with this for quite some time, so.
Thank you.
Good solution.
Any others? Yes, Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that as well. You did a good job with this one. And you're a historian, right?
Yes, sir.
You know what? You kind of remind me, well, do you know how the Statue of Liberty became about? And I'll call you later with this.
Okay.
You remind me of Eduardo, I think, Pizarro. Look his name up. That's who you remind me of.
Okay. Thank you. Not Joe McCarthy.
Not Joe.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes, do you need a motion to approve those arrangements?
Oh, so the motion was to pass them in omnibus fashion.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so now I'll take a motion to pass all six ordinances in omnibus fashion.
So moved.
Second.
Now, roll call, please.
Zizata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
7I?
So Resolution 2024-062, 63, 64, 65, 66, and 67 have passed. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinance is second reading. We have none. And then Agenda Item L, ordinance is first reading. We have public comment from Mark Charbot.
We want to wave? We need to wave?
No, it was a resolution, so it just passed. Got it.
All right. Never mind.
Yep, thank you, though. I have a concern about a potential breach in the water agreement contract between Meta and the City of DeKalb that was signed in 2020. Before you tonight, the city manager is proposing a substantial water rate increase. There are two issues with this action that conflicts with the water agreement between Meta and the City of DeKalb that would put the city perhaps in legal peril. On page five of the water agreement from 2020, paragraph 6B is the issue. It says, quoting now, "The water rate shall only, shall be based only upon the city's actual operating maintenance and capital outlay expenses and the cost of capacity purchases from third parties and similar expenses for the water system. Customer acknowledges that a public hearing must be held prior to the adjustment of the water rate. I see two violations of this clause that the city signed with our partners at Meta." As you heard described by Ms. Fizikas a little earlier, it's been determined that the City of DeKalb is utilizing the water fund for non-water-related expenses. The city has been paying portions of the non-water-related City of DeKalb employee salaries for using the water fund. This has been ongoing for some time. Ms. Fizikas identified 50 employees across many City of departments who do not work for the water utility. The city manager denied this particular aspect when this very question was asked by Alderman Verbeck recently at a city council meeting, but the facts prove otherwise. This is very troubling, and the public and our community investment partners at Meta are being misled. B, no public hearing. The City of DeKalb has failed to hold a public hearing on the water rate increase as required by the Meta agreement. Having a public hearing a week or two before final action allows the public and Meta to provide input and feedback to city officials before final action is taken. Again, no public hearing has taken place on the water rate increase, not just this year, but for the last four years. You've been in violation. I checked the published public notices and City of DeKalb meeting agendas. Again, no public hearing on the water rate increase. This is a huge breach of the terms of the agreement. The city council needs to hold a public hearing on the water rate increase and postpone action on this revenue generator. Please follow what you signed. Thank you.
All right, I would take a motion to bring number one, which is Ordinance 2024-026, amending Chapter 7, Water Service, Section 7.15, Water Rates, and Section 7.18-6, Water Service Fee, to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Walker, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an, actually, it's less than an inflationary increase, which was considered by the council two meetings ago, and we were encouraged to bring this back to you for action, and it's what we've done tonight. The actual increase is 3.3%. And in terms of a local household, the calculated difference would be about $1.36 a month, about $16.32 a year. So that's what's before you now. I don't remember Mr. Charbot being in the room when the agreement was negotiated with Facebook then, now Meta, but I was. And the concern that they had, and they have in other communities where they have developed, is fees that aren't, as in this case, an inflationary increase, but fees that are attached to, say, a new wrinkle, a new way of exacting some charges or monies from a particular development that are outside of the normal operating requirements of the facility, in this case, the utility, which is the city's utility. And so that's what that was. That's why we haven't had any kind of hearing on that. But if we were to say, from now on, we're going to add another fee to help us pay for the expansion of the system, then we'd have to bring that forward. We would bring that forward anyway, but that was the consideration at the time. That's the consideration that still stands. And I heard about Mr. Charbot's foray to blow up a very good relationship earlier today, and I can confirm what I've just said.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Alderman Walker?
Okay, just come back again. I just want to hear. Are we allowed to even talk about what he just said, or do I just got to?
You can answer. Yeah, and Bill brought it up, so.
Okay, cool. So just, I just want to understand, that's 100%. Just can you go over that again? Because he's claiming that we can't take certain funds, or we can't exactly.
Oh, so that's part two.
Okay, so, oh, so I'm getting there. Okay, okay.
So that's Mr. Charbot's part two. So, yeah, the fact is, in the 2000s and the 2010s, under other administrations, other councils, when there were difficulties in balancing the general fund, other funds were used to tap into. And in some cases, there's a legitimate nexus between, say, somebody in the finance office who's dealing with water payments and the water fund. But it was more generally used, and the numbers weren't always correlated to actual service that was performed in behalf of a certain fund. And the most egregious of these was the TIF fund, because, and we went through a forensic audit to learn that there were some years in which $800,000 were used to offset, quote, "administrative costs incurred by city officials in the performance of their duties." And obviously, others independent of us thought that was egregious. We thought that was egregious. There are no more TIF funds used for administration. That hasn't been the case since 2019. There was something in the 2019 budget, and I remember we were meeting on a monthly basis then with our JRB, and we basically turned back the money that had been spent on a monthly basis. It was built into the budget, and we just said, stop that, to stop that. Now, haven't been able to do that so much with the water fund entirely. It would be nice to do, but the hole that was dug over almost two decades was pretty deep, and there still is some water fund money. And some of that is legitimate, and in terms of what I would like to see, but I'd like to see us go further. And that's something that every year, we wrestle with a little bit and try to do our best with, but there still are some funds that are used for outside. But again, I would say that it's work in progress. There was well over, you know, it was $800,000 just in TIF, and probably a couple hundred thousand more in other funds that were being tapped for the general fund, and we've gone a long way toward reversing that.
Yes, Alderman Walker?
So can I ask, city attorney? So we're not in violation of anything by doing this, right?
No, what the Facebook agreement was, is they needed a certain amount of water, and they wanted to, they were going to be an incredibly large user of water.
Right.
And they wanted to make sure that, usually, you charge based on water usage, and they wanted to make sure that they weren't discriminated against, and I say that in quotes, based on their amount of water usage, and that future rates, when it was changed, wouldn't penalize them. But if they were generally applicable rates to everybody, in the nondiscrimination principle, there's no breach of contract, right? And trust me, Facebook would be jumping here and yelling and screaming if they knew that their water changes were, if we were violating it. So it's, you know, somebody slept on a holiday end today.
Alderman Verbeck?
And I guess now, hearing that there are water revenues being used for other cost centers, I think we should revisit which of those cost centers are being used or funded with water revenue, and what is that percentage? So, in other words, justifying use of the water revenue for perhaps unrelated purposes. Now, understanding the dollars have to come from somewhere to fund these cost centers, but perhaps it's not appropriate that the dollars come from the water source. The city managers you've referred to, we've tried to get away from that. So I would like to continue pursuit of that and find out if water fund is needed for these cost centers, and it's not related to water services, perhaps we should look at another revenue option to cover those costs that's not water.
Any? Alderman Walker?
So, but I mean, and I kind of went over this a little bit thoroughly, because it's, you know, it kind of fascinates me. What, I mean, we can't pour from anywhere else. I'm like, like, we can't, like, this.
No, we can't. We can transfer money from the general fund to the water fund to repay for next, when we did the 25 budget, we can do that.
But what are the, I guess, I mean, I don't want to get into it now, but what are the pros and cons of that?
Purity. But there are certain, you know, this, you know, we could give you chapter and verse, and we'll do that when we get to the FAC meeting in August. But, and I don't have it in front of me, if we were going to talk about this, I would have done my homework yesterday on this. But I can tell you that most of the, most of what we pay for is directly to people who are performing services in behalf of water-related services. So there is some that goes to the city manager's office. You know, it's not a revelation. This is something we learned, I learned frankly, when I first came in as city manager. I think it was about the second meeting, and we were trying to save a million-plus dollars, and I thought I had found a way, and then I found out to my chagrin that there were still some dollars that were, it wasn't true savings of a million. So we had to go and find some more money so we could hit that million, because there was some water money in the general fund. And this is, this is now esoteric, we're off the subject, but I can tell you that it's not by accident that an independent auditor finds our finances with an unqualified positive conclusion. And we've been doing that for 29 years. And this past year was the best that they had seen since they came back for this. They've been working our audit now for a number of years. And there was a separation, and we had somebody else before that, and then they were, maybe 10, 15 years ago as well. So I'm proud of that. And there's nothing untoward, or illegal, or unusual, basically, about what we're doing. There isn't another municipality, and I've worked in at least one other, and that where at some point along the way, somebody reached for some money. And it's hard to back out of that, because you've, the demands for service don't stop. So if you want to use some of your reserve to pay off the water fund, we'll do it. It's not a big number, but it's a number.
All right, appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zizata?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Ordinance 2024-026 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zizata, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any questions or comments on waiving second reading? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zizata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
All right, second reading has been waived for, and it's 2024-026. Moving us on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications. Alderman Smith, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Okay. Alderman Zizata will go right.
Sure. So I'm going to do something a little unconventional. I had a person reach out who had experienced these fires these past couple of weeks from my ward, and I spoke with Jennifer Yocum today. We had a good conversation. I caught up on what had taken place to take care of what was going on with the fires. But in that context, you know, I called back the, this resident and spoke with him a little bit more and was like, you know, hey, you know, what else can we do? And what, where he was at with what else could be done was, you know, gas cards, you know, food cards. And so I would ask Jennifer right now if those are reasonable things that people could send to FSA on behalf of these people who've experienced this fire.
You mean individual residents?
Yeah, individual residents, sending donations to FSA. Sorry. I know. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I kind of thought it would happen. Yes, as a matter of fact, FSA has a donation page.
Okay.
That's been broadcast by the Chamber, DeKalb Chamber, so you can go to Chamber's webpage and click on it and donate funds. They're also accepting those gift cards. I will also say that when we had our resource fair on the 31st, two days after the fire, the residents received $300 in gift cards from Schnucks and Canes, and maybe Walmart in gas cards, they got just from DeKalb Township. Additionally, they have resources through FSA. They can get up to $1,000 for security deposit. They can get up to $1,000 from FSA Family Service Agency for similar items. Also, the funds can be used for renting a U-Haul, you know, the transportation. Then, you know, so many of the other agencies that were there, there were 21 agencies here in this very room on the 31st, giving out these resources. I've also put together a spreadsheet, a couple of spreadsheets for the tenants that have a listing of all the agencies, who to contact, the phone number, and what resources they have available to them. Also, a list of landlords that had vacancies, and then another listing of other agencies within the community that weren't present. The resources are there. I know that eight of the families have either gone through an intake process at Family Service Agency, they've gone through the process, or they're scheduled between today and tomorrow to get the process going and getting funding. Two residents are getting a security deposit for their new units. They're just waiting for the landlord to accept payment. So that's huge. There are still some families at Red Roof Inn that are short. So getting donations is huge for these families right now. Lots of clothing and household products are necessary and needed. I am in communication with them on a regular basis, texting them and calling, and I'm trying to arrange to have a follow-up meeting either tomorrow or Wednesday. I just... I just, just need to make sure that they're okay.
Right, right.
So, one of the, one of the things, uh, so, yes, that was Friday. And then Monday, we met at City Hall, Jennifer Yocum, city manager, and myself, uh, with, I think, six or seven of the families. Um, and just got a status update on where things at, where, where, what do you still need, and all those. And I got to commend Jennifer for doing a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, not only right after the fire, but that Friday, and then on Monday as well, working with everyone. But something that we are going to do after this is a little bit of a post-emergency, uh, conference, we'll call it, uh, with a lot of the service providers to figure out, what did we learn in a process like this? Uh, one of the things we did learn is a summary sheet, that would be great when we have that event here, um, so people understand contact information, what services each organization provided. But then also, we're going to bring a consideration forward at some point with potentially having counsel approval, of course. Uh, maybe a little bit of a fund set aside for emergencies, because it seemed like one thing that was a gap potentially is from the night of the fire to when they were in front of the twenty-one service providers to be able to get aid, um, housing, clothing, food, all that. No different than the fund that we set aside for the migrants, in a way. So this is something we're talking about with the city manager, to figure out how we can get it into the next budget cycle. We'll bring it forward as a consideration to counsel, um, so we can make sure that immediate gap is taken care of. But our social service agencies, uh, and nonprofit community really just stepped up.
Huge, huge.
And did a fine job, and I heard that from family after family after family, uh, from the fire as well, which was great. So thank you.
You're welcome. Um, something else that came from this, from the American Red Cross, they liked the way that DeKalb came together, and we're having a meeting tomorrow with Lake County to help them develop a plan.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jennifer.
And can I just say, I absolutely applaud your efforts, and I know that the, uh, you know, nonprofit community has done an amazing job, and so have you. And so I just want to say, my question had nothing to do with questioning that, and I know you guys have done an amazing job, so thank you so much.
And, and I have to say, you know, the library, they came through for us to, to give us this space. Family Service Agency, huge partnership with them, and coming together, can't say enough good things about Riley. She was a great hire for Family Service Agency. Um, and just all the other agencies that came, they showed up, and that was the big thing, is the people showed up. And it's not seen everywhere, but it's here in DeKalb, so it's good.
Awesome, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Alderman Larson?
Um, I just have a, a quick thing, because I actually got three calls or emails this weekend about people driving perhaps a bit too fast on North First, like, really fast. And just any time of the year, that can cause problems, but kids are out of school, and really just getting into the whole freedom of summer and not paying attention, and maybe crossing when they shouldn't. So just, everybody, just watch your speed.
Thank you. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Verbeck?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
No report.
Alderman Powell?
No report.
Uh, for me, real quick, attended Fun Jam in the Park. It's a great event that our DeKalb Police Department puts on at Welsh Park. I think you have, like, ten of those or something, uh, every Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday and Thursday, yes.
And I assume, if you want to volunteer, you can go to the website, find a way to sign up. But well-attended, kids everywhere, uh, steel band playing last time, uh, just a great overall event. Um, so thanks for, you and the department for putting that on, chief. Um, then also, went to a block party, uh, at our property at nine twelve Edgebrook, uh, that Malia Jones put on, and that's where I met one of the residents from the fire, which triggered the Monday meeting. Uh, but it was great. Malia is someone that, uh, never disappoints. She just continues to put on more and more events in the community and gets a lot of people out. Had a lot of fun there. Um, also, uh, went to Meta's presentation on the community action grants, uh, that was actually done at their data center, which was really cool. And it was just, uh, Meta recognizing all the great nonprofits that we have, but the ones that they have financially contributed to. And Meta, uh, originally said that they wanted to make a significant impact on the community that they have a physical presence in, and they continue to deliver year over year, uh, with that. So that was just wonderful to go to. And then last, I went to Pride in the Eight One Five, uh, that was an event at Hopkins Park. My God, it was, it was incredible, uh, drag DJs, lip syncing, I mean, I laughed, cheered, uh, just had an absolute ball. So remember, Pride in the Eight One Five. I can't say enough, next year, if they put on that event, it, it really is a must-go-to, so a lot of fun. Uh, city manager, how about you?
I'll report.
Yes, Alderman Zizata?
Two hundred and thirty.
Oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what my point is, that despite all of the amazing efforts of our community to support these people, there is still need, and so I just want to be clear to encourage the community to continue to donate to Family Service Agency, because it really can help support these people. Just imagine if you lost everything in your home, and you had to put down a security deposit, and you had to put forward first month's rent. You still have to replace everything. And so those costs are really exorbitant, and so people's needs are great.
Thanks for calling that up.
Hey, and people don't know about renters insurance as well, and you can get that, you know, when you get your car insurance. I mean, it's only like a hundred bucks, uh, a year, I believe.
Yeah, it's cheap.
So, hey.
Or inexpensive.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, great call out. All right, city manager?
No report.
All right, so, with that, we'll move on to agenda item N, executive session. I would take a motion to approve us to go into executive session in order to discuss the sale or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C six. And then also, uh, in order to discuss personnel as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C one. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Uh, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zizata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
All right, our regular meeting is now in recess.